Good morning. I'm recording this on. Okay. Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. Please join me in standing for the invocation to be given by Mayor Porter Finch.
Father, we thank you so much for the ability to serve. And thank you for your grace. And we thank you so much for the town that we live in, that we all love so much. Great for wisdom as we meet tonight to decide things before the council. Thank you so much for our residence and the spirit that we all live in here. Thank you for your many blessings, which bless our town. And it is.
Amen. Please join me in standing to be quite definitely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, please be seated. Once again, let me welcome each one of you. The council and the members of the audience too. The council meeting for Monday, May tenth, twenty twenty-one. That time is seven twelve. With all council members present, we have call. The first item is introduction of new employees. Philip Feinhals, Town Planner, and Kimberly's proud part-time librarian. Have you discovered?
Um, actually, um, Charles is going to introduce the town planner and Rachel is going to introduce the library.
So, Charles, hey there. Can you hear me? Okay, so, uh, you want to stand up? Uh, so Philip Feinhals is, uh, the new planner. He started in mid-April. Uh, he just recently graduated from Texas A&amp;M, but we don't hold that against him. But, uh, he graduated with a degree in university studies and architecture with minors in planning and business. Um, he's from Rowlett, still lives in Rowlett. And, uh, if you're in the market, he collects and resells shoes, so you can talk to him after the meeting if you want. But, uh, in all seriousness, he's been here for about a month. He's doing, um, great. I'm super impressed, and I think you will be too as you get to know him.
Welcome. Rachel?
Mayor and Council, Kimberly. Kimberly comes to the town of Sunnyvale after seventeen years with the Dallas Public Library, working at the bookmarks Branch within North Park Center. She has extensive experience working with children and families, especially in planning children's programs. She is looking forward to getting to expand her horizons and work more with all age groups, as well as learning all the different facets of the library operations, and as part of her pursuit in her Masters of Library Science degree beginning this fall. Glad to have her.
You guys want to come up for a photo?
All right, next item is announcement pursuant to Texas Government Court Section five fifty-one dot oh four one five. Mayor, council, and staff may report on various items. Council, other any announcements? How about your staff, Susan?
Yes, sir. We're going to celebrate this at a later time, but I can't let this meeting go by without mentioning it. That, um, in the prior meeting, you had the police chief come in and tell you about their journey towards the best practices recognition program. And subsequently after that, um, the team had their site visit, and we got word on May seventh that just seven months after starting the department, that they were recognized by the Texas Police Chiefs Association as a recognized law enforcement agency. This program evaluates police departments' compliance with over one hundred and sixty-eight best business practices for Texas law enforcement. So, you know, I really, like I said, we're going to celebrate later when they come and present the awards. So I'm jumping the gun, but, um, it is Law Enforcement, Texas Law Enforcement Recognition Week as well. And so this is a really nice time to thank our police department, but recognize our police chief for everything he did to just really, right out of the gates, make this a quality agency and something as a community we can be really proud of. So, thank you, Chief.
Our officers work and Angie work their rear ends off to get this done, so it's, uh, I congratulate all of them.
Mr. Clark?
So that reminds me, um, tomorrow at Hope Coffee from six to eight in the morning, and then Wednesday from six to eight in the evening, there's going to be a coffee and tea with the police. So, um, encourage everybody to stop by, um, again, Tuesday morning, six to eight, and then Wednesday evening, six to eight. So you guys can stop by and meet our finest.
Tomorrow's AM and?
Yes, tomorrow's AM, Wednesday's PM. So six, eight in the morning, then Wednesday, six to eight in the evening.
Scott, thanks for mentioning that. I meant to say it, but I forgot. Thanks for, anyone else? Okay. Moving on to public forum, this is the time members of the audience may come forward and speak to the council on any items other than personal matters or legal matters or items on the agenda. So if you'd like to come forward and speak to the council, you may come forward. Uh, if you're joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Good evening, sir. Do you want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Randy Harden, three seventy Towne East Boulevard.
Rock from Randy.
Thank you, guys, uh, for letting us, and I'm proud to be a citizen out here, living here for over twenty-six years, if for no other reason what you did when you started this meeting. To ask for God's grace is, um, special. So thank you all for that. My wife Cindy Harden right there. My daughter Tyler and her husband Ethan. They're building a house on our farm. Oh, I need to stand closer, I'm sorry. So Cindy, uh, Harden, Cindy McGee Harden, Tyler and Ethan Smith, and then my son-in-law Jason, who runs First Baptist Academy. He's the headmaster, head football coach, janitor, uh, everything. In a nutshell, I know y'all can't make any decisions. How you doing, brother? Uh, can't make any decisions tonight. I just wanted to appeal to you for your mercy. My father-in-law bought that land back in nineteen eighty. Uh, got it for a steal and built a home. His son, Mike McGee, who was the, uh, former fire volunteer, fire chief, and was on P and Z, and my brother-in-law, Bill Shelby, and his wife Judy, who Judy McGee, also served on the fire department, as did my wife, and, uh, on P and Z. I say all that to say this, we're entrenched in this town, uh, for over forty years. My father-in-law's dream was that seventeen acres would be, the houses would be built on one acre lots by his four children, and then ultimately maybe grandchildren. Cindy and I built, her brother built, Judy, the black sheep went across the street. Uh, y'all have ever eaten Shelby's barbecue, you know who they are. Uh, my daughter is now building a home and her husband on the property. And what we're coming to the town to ask, and I know I need to do a site plan, which I didn't know how to do. Uh, I'm a battery salesman, I, I struggle, stuff like that. Uh, so we're going to do what we can do to get that presented to the, uh, Board of Adjustment or whatever that's called, and then go to P and Z and then come to you. But I just wanted to appeal to you guys, just in the hopes that, not that you can make a decision on it, we're just trying to fulfill the dream that my father-in-law had. We own the land, we bought it from the siblings. We're financing the homes that are being built and, not that any of that matters, uh, God's blessed us. But what we're wanting to do is just on the home that was there for forty years, is sell that to that son-in-law and my other daughter, I have four daughters, all went to Sunnyvale, uh, and put it on one acre. Because he doesn't have the money to buy all the rest of the land from, and I don't want to finance anymore. I'm done with the financing, I hope. So we're selling the one acre to the one daughter and her husband, and we just want that one home on one acre. So will that require some variances to codes that were, that are part of the city's planning now? Absolutely. It's family land. The fire trucks and police cars can get down the driveway to the house. They've been there many times, uh, unfortunately, over the years. Utility easement, uh, they've come through that, along that back fence, but they can come down the drive or whatever they need to do. So my purpose tonight was just to appeal to you guys. If you have any influence with the P and Z or the Board of Adjusters, that maybe just tell them, hey, he's just trying to, to put that house on acre. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Harden. Appreciate you. Okay, anyone else from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council? Erica, anyone joining from the, from the Zoom call?
No, sir.
Okay, no one is raising their hand or no one is coming forward from the chambers. So I'm going to close the public forum. Counsel, we have four, uh, important topics. I guess every one of them are important, but specifically a timely one. Number two, discuss, consider, and act upon a resolution. Twenty-one dash eighteen, canvassing returns and declaring results of the general election held on May first, twenty twenty-one, for the purpose of electing mayor and town council member places five and six. Ms. Ramsey?
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to note that there is one change to the resolution that was presented to you in your packet. Um, after posting the agenda late Friday afternoon, we received tabulations from Dallas County. Uh, there was one provisional ballot in Sunnyvale, which increased the mayor's, um, votes by from six ninety-eight to six ninety-nine. It increased Larry Allen from four seventy-two to four seventy-three, making his total percentage fifty-seven point seven five, rather than fifty-seven point seven zero, and increased Jonathan Freeman from six sixty-two to six sixty-three.
Thanks, Rachel. I don't need to go for public comments on this one, right? All right, so Rachel, the action here is to pass the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counsel, you heard the resolution. Can I have a motion, uh, with respect to resolution twenty-one dash eighteen?
Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash eighteen as presented.
Motion made by Mayor Porter Finch to approve a solution twenty-one dash eighteen. Second by Mr. Eldridge. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify? All opposed, motion passed seven oh. Thank you. Next one is the President's Certificate of Election to Mayor George. Councilmember Larry Allen, place five, and Councilmember Jonathan Freeman, place six, following the May one, twenty twenty-one general election date.
Mayor and Council, I think that if you'll read number three, four, and five, we can go up here and do all three of them at one time because it can take lots of signatures.
I can do that. Number four is the Statement of Officer is completed by newly elected officials. And number five is administer the oath of office to Mayor Saji George. Councilmember Larry Allen, place five, Councilmember Jonathan Freeman, place six, following the May one, twenty twenty-one general election date, in accordance with the state law and ordinance twenty-one dash O two that ordered the general election. Ms. Ramsey?
Yes, sir, we'll go down here and we'll do it. Do you want to do it one by one, or do you all three want to come down there?
All three?
Sure, we can, you can all three come down there, and then we can do it one by one.
Okay.
I?
I.
State your name.
Saji George.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I.
State your name.
Larry Allen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
Faithfully execute.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of town council member, place five.
Town council, place five.
Of the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I.
State my name. State your name.
Rachel. Jonathan Freeman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
Of town council member, place six.
Of town council member, place six.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thanks, guys, for coming. Ready? Okay, counsel, let's move on to the consent agenda items. We have three items, item number six, seven, and eight. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items six, seven, and eight?
Motion to approve consent agenda items six, seven, and eight.
Circle. Motion made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Clark, to approve consent agenda items six, seven, and eight. All in favor signify? All opposed, motion passed seven oh. Moving on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, item number nine, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act upon the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash eleven, change in the zoning on three properties totaling seven point eight seven acres, located generally at the northwest corner of Clay Road and Long Creek Road, from single-family one SF one to industrial I. That's it. Uh, Charles?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this item is, uh, requested by the property owners to rezone three unplanted properties totaling about seven point eight seven acres at the northwest corner of Clay Road and Long Creek Road. The properties are currently zoned, uh, single-family one, and they're mostly vacant, except one lot has a home on it. Uh, the homeowner and the owner of the adjacent parcels are requesting permission to rezone the properties to industrial, so that they can be combined with the, uh, lot to the north of these properties, which is vacant and also under the same ownership, and combined into one industrial parcel that can be developed. Uh, the property fronts an industrial corridor on Long Creek, and most of the surrounding properties are either currently used, uh, or at least zoned for industrial uses. Uh, the existing single-family one zoning designation is more of a reflection of the fact that there is an existing home on the property, but that homeowner is now looking to sell and get out. Uh, and so it doesn't really make good planning sense to continue to have one lone, single-family home in the middle of an industrial area. Uh, this, uh, thought is reflected on the town's, uh, future land use map that was adopted as part of the comprehensive plan in, uh, twenty seventeen. The future land use map indicates that these properties should, uh, be rezoned to industrial at some point, uh, in the future. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this request at their April twenty-first meeting, and they recommend approval of the rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Let me take the public, the public comments. If there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council, you may do so at this time. If you're joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Good evening, sir.
Mayor, council members, my name is Eddie Eckert. I'm with Goodwood and Marshall, we're the civil engineering surveying company representing the prospective buyer and developer of this property. Um, he's out of town, but is on the Zoom call. Really just here to answer any questions that you might have. The architect is on as well for the site plan, um, that'll be heard here in a couple of minutes as well. So, um, again, staff's done a great job presenting, uh, what we're trying to accomplish here, and look forward to getting this project moving forward and under development.
So, if you're okay with it, let me take public comments, uh, and I'll come back to you if the council has any questions. Again, if public has any comments, you may come forward or join us via Zoom by raising your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber? Erica, anyone raising their hands?
No, sir.
No hands raised, we're going to close the public comments. I have just one question, I know we send out for public comments, we have one response in favor.
Yes, sir.
Did anyone else reach out to us since then?
No, sir. Uh, we have the one, uh, response that is in favor, and that is, uh, one owner that owns a lot of property in the area, two of the parcels that are subject to the rezoning, as well as they own a couple of the parcels around there.
Yeah.
As well, so they represented a big portion of, of the area. The town also got a letter because our, our Public Works Building is adjacent to these properties, uh, and we don't see any impact, uh, to our operations from this rezoning. Uh, but, I mean, we didn't feel it was appropriate to respond to our own letter.
And you said the architect is on the line? Owner of the architect? Both?
It's the prospective buyer, who, who will be the developer and the architect of both.
Gotcha. Okay, so let me ask you before the gentleman goes and sit down. Counsel, do you have any question for, uh, gentleman here? It's easy, right?
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to give a chance to the prospective owner and the architect. Gentlemen, would you, uh, like to comment on anything? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand, or you can speak up. Okay. Sounds like there are no comments. Counsel, are there any questions for the applicant or any of the agents? Okay, if not, can I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I would like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
For questions, I was seeing if you would say comment.
Let me ask you, since I called for a motion, can I finish the motion, then come back and give it up? That be okay with you? Okay, can I have a motion with respect to item number nine, please?
Mayor, make a motion to approve item nine as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve item number twenty-one and seconded by Mr. Egan. Everyone heard the motion? Mr. Egan, time for discussion, so. Our question.
Well, I think we're probably headed down the right road. I'm glad to see that this is happening. This particular owner came to P and Z when I sat on P and Z many years ago. That hand, that piece of property is basically landlocked by industrial. And considering his situation, he actually was encroached upon by the industrial, by the way it happened. So this is kind of taking care of a bruised Band-Aid or a bruise. That a house just got built in the wrong place because at the time that it got built, you know, Gardiner Denver was the property. That was the industrial property that soon went defunct. And there was a lot of this want, for lack of a better word, and that's not a word. For people to, for the town to grow with that type of industrial thing, but we've since learned our lesson and I'm glad to see that we're moving forward there and taking care of that. Residents in such a way that we don't have to worry about a future prospective owner buying it. And complain about not only the trucks, but also the train and everything else that goes through there. So I think we're headed down the right road.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Are there additional comments or discussions on item number nine? Okay, if not, all in favor, signify. All opposed, motion pass seven oh. Thank you, staff, for coming, joining. Moving on to the discussion and action item portion of the agenda. Item number ten. Discuss, discuss, consider, and act upon electing a council member to serve as mayor pro temp. Mr. 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 Ramsey?
Mayor and council, the Home Rule Charter states that the council shall elect a mayor pro temp. It should be following each regular town election. The town council shall elect a mayor pro temp and the mayor pro temp shall act as the mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor. And when doing so, he shall have the rights conferred upon as the mayor. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions for staff? We don't need a public comment, see, right? Okay, council, can I have a motion with respect to number ten?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Larry Allen as mayor pro temp.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to appoint Ms. Larry Allen as the mayor, as the mayor pro temp. You have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Mr. Clark. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions?
I would like to, I think that Larry would do a great job. But I would also like to consider someone else, Mr. Mark Egan as well. I know we've already made a motion that we're going to need to vote. But you know, I think Mark's been around for a while, he's been on the council. He's got tenure, he's been on planning zoning, lived Sunnyvale for longer than anyone else in the council. Just think that he would be a good candidate as well.
Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed? Motion pass four-three, appointing Larry Allen as the mayor pro temp. Moving on to item number eleven, discuss, consider, and act upon a site plan for the thirty-two point five acre property zone. Industry located generally along Clay Road. Five hundred feet southeast of the intersection of Clay Road and South Collins Road. Case sixteen ninety-nine dash SP, Clay Commerce Center. Mr. Goff?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is site plan approval, a request for two lots totaling about thirty-two point five acres. Located along the southwest side of Clay Road in between South Collins and Long Creek Road. The properties are zoned industrial and the applicant is requesting to construct an approximately four hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and fifty square foot warehouse and distribution center. That would include about twenty-four thousand square feet of office space for running the facility. All uses are allowed in the industrial district. The site would have two access points from Clay Road, as well as a potential connection to future development on the property to the south of the Encore utility easement to the south side of the property. The building would be oriented east-west and there would be truck courts on the north and south facades. The site meets all landscaping requirements, including a twenty-five foot landscape setback. Along clay with a six-foot sidewalk, a street tree, some earthen berms and planting beds. Additionally, the applicant is proposing to install four hundred and forty-nine trees on the property. And will include foundation landscaping along the east and west facades with stamped concrete benches. Planters and bike racks at the main entrances of the building in accordance with the U D O requirements. The site plan is typically a ministerial function, we've been putting that on the consent agenda for the past few meetings. And it is still a ministerial function in this case, however, the applicant is requesting two of what the U D O calls alternative compliance methods, which are effectively waivers to the town's typical requirements. And so we're having it on the discussion portion of the agenda to talk about these two components of the plan. First relates to the design standards that call for three feet of articulation of a building facade. So the building has to come, you know, in and out every thirty feet, just to create some visual interest. The building complies with this on the east and west facades, but it does not on the north and south facades where the truck courts are located. Obviously, when you have a truck court trying to back up to a loading dock, having the facade change in and out can be problematic. The staff is supportive of this request as it's been allowed or this this request has been granted for other distribution facilities. Or light industrial facilities that have been proposed. And actually, if this property was zoned highway commercial, the U D O actually expressly says in highway commercial that truck courts do not have to be, do not have to meet that articulation requirement. So to be consistent with how we treated others, we think this is a fair request. Second relates to screening walls. The U D O requires a screening wall of the same material as the building of sufficient height to screen whatever's being stored on the property. In this case, they're storing trailers, so that's a pretty tall wall to try and screen a trailer. And so you know, if you ran a fourteen-foot tall concrete wall along the area of the truck parking, that would be pretty visibly obtrusive. And so the applicant is proposing a screening wall that would be a mixture of a concrete base, some simulated wrought iron, then with landscaping planted in front of the wall to add that extra height to screen the trailers. We think that's a softer, more visually appealing way to meet the spirit of the U D O rather than just a massive concrete wall. The P and Z considered this request at their April meeting and they recommend approval of the site plan with the two alternative compliance methods.
Okay, let me open up our public comments, thanks, Charles. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, item number eleven, you may do so. If you're joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. Good evening, sir.
Eddie Eckert, Goodwood Marshall Civil Engineering Surveying Company, representing prospective buyer, developer. Again, here to answer any questions. Hopefully, if there's any architectural questions, they can raise their hand and answer them, that's not my expertise. Any other questions you might have, I can answer and again, the prospective buyers on the Zoom call as well.
Thank you, Eddie. Anyone else? Eric, anyone raising their hand?
No, sir.
Okay, no one is coming forward from the chamber and no one raising their hands, we're going to close the public comments. Charles had two questions on it. The two exemptions, they asked for three feet. Did you say if it's a highway commercial, we would allow it, but not from the industrial?
Correct.
That's kind of strange, I thought industrial is more of a...
Yeah, I'm not sure the history of why it was included in a highway commercial and not industrial unless it was just an oversight. When we do talk about the U D O and some changes to make to the U D O, that's on my list to talk about with the council to make consistent.
Is it your intent to come and recommend to make that similar to?
The highway commercial standard, yes.
Second one on the screening, I'm always worried about the screening. And every applicant says they'll put a wrought iron fence and put a plant. The next thing we know is a one-inch plant in front of it with, there's absolutely no screening. I don't know who is on the other side of the fence. How do we assure real screening, not just, you know, I put three plants there or, you know, how many are plants? But very small caliber and caliber is just, how do we make sure there's proper, who is on the other side?
So the the two locations that the screening walls are going to be located are on the, basically the north side of the building. As it, as it fronts Clay Road. And so it's the building, this truck court, then the the screening wall, and then there's a big landscape area. And then on the south side of the facility, there would be another screening wall adjacent to the Encore easement. And then it's this developer's intent to develop a phase two of a of a distribution center on the south side.
Can you pull up that on your, is it possible to pull up or maybe Rachel can pull that up? I suppose if they're fronting Claire or that's that's just a highly visible area. Counsel, while Charles is looking up, I'm on page number thirty-six. I look at the Clay Road that's really facing the Banderas Lane, which is, which is the stone, stone canyon. And I want to make sure they have enough protection. Thank you, Charles.
Sure. So if you can see the mouse on the screen.
Yeah.
So on the north side of the building, this line right here is where one of the screening walls would be that would screen it from view from the north. And then on the south side, there's another screening wall down here that would screen it from view from the south side.
And it. So what what is on south side again, trying to figure out exactly what is on the south side, I can't figure out.
So if you look at this map, this is the the map of the property. So these are the properties that were just rezoned industrial, this is the other industrial property right here. And so the intent of the developer is to develop another distribution center right here. So it would just front another distribution center.
So they're adjacent on the, is that the north?
Right.
Is it south, what is that, below that?
It's the south.
Okay. So they're adjacent to the subject property southeast, another industrial property. Talk to me about the north.
So on the the north side, again, you have the wall right here.
That's a solid concrete wall?
So they're proposing to do the the concrete base with wrought iron within landscaping in front of it. And maybe another thing I can show you is the landscape plan. So each of these are trees. Okay. So again, the thick line right here is is the screening wall and then you have a number of trees planted in front of the wall. And so the intent is for all of this landscaping to add to the fence to to screen the view. What we've told the developer and we have in writing is that, you know, this is the the landscape plan that we think is going to be sufficient to screen it. When it actually gets constructed, the landscaping gets installed, we'll inspect the property and if it's not, they'll have to adjust the landscaping to to add additional trees or taller trees or something to effectively screen the property.
Do they have a requirement to maintain the landscape?
Yes. Yeah, it again, if they're using, if they're using the landscaping to screen, then if for some reason the tree dies or something, then and it no longer provides screening. Then that would be a code enforcement issue, they'd have to replace the tree.
Is this something normally enforced, or is it easy enough to enforce it or that's that's a hard part?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that, plus the distance, there's a whole nother row of trees you can see. And I think if in the communication that Charles put together, there's also another point, just to reiterate it, is that the wall would only be nine feet tall and so the trucks are fourteen feet tall. So this is really, I think the intent is to be a more effective screening than a solid wall that would only cover part of the trucks. So I think that was the intent.
Nine more concrete or nine more?
No, if they built the wall, it would only have been nine feet tall. So this is just an alternative method, I think, to get more height to the screening method, Charles, is that correct?
Right, so the the base of the wall will be concrete, it'll vary in what height, just because the the elevation changes on the property.
Roughly what height?
Four to five feet, I believe, it's down here at the bottom.
And then the wrought iron?
And then the wrought iron would go above that. And and the thought process is you'd use concrete near the the bottom where you don't have that the trees covering. And then once you get up to the canopy of the tree, you can switch to the wrought iron and the combination of the concrete and the the multiple layers of trees will provide an effective screening.
What about along the Clay Road side, which is facing Banderas? What's, what's our?
So there are are trees all along clay, so this is Banderas Lane here. You have street trees at the street. You have the wall here with additional trees in front of the wall. There's also a an elevation change too, so it's it's higher up so that the that provides a little bit of screening as well, just being higher up on the hill, basically.
Is that a cut into the Clay Road from that one? Is that the one we see between the trees?
Yes, there's, yes, there's a driveway.
There won't be any trailers there?
No, the trailers are basically up here.
How do we prevent that? Is there a parking location specified?
It looks like there's a road there, but there's just a road.
Yes, yeah, trailers could use this, but they wouldn't be parked or stored there.
I mean, as I look at this, my biggest concern is the residents of Stone Canyon. Because the residents of Stone Canyon, that's going to be right there, there's a road there, there's houses, they're there. And what it looks like here, the trees are going to cover, you know, any major issues, I mean, maybe from, maybe not from the building itself. But from the trailers for sure, because the trailers are going to be on the north side. But no, I mean, I think, yeah, no, that was my biggest concern was being there because again, that now it looks like it's it's good there.
You're cool?
Yeah.
Okay, council, I'm going to open up for your comments, please. Charles, did we send this out for public comments or this is not something we do?
Since it's site plan approval, we did not send it out for public.
Okay. Okay, council, there are no other comments or discussions on this that call for a motion on item number eleven.
Mayor, make a motion to approve item number eleven as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve item number eleven as presented. Second. Mr. Eldridge? Second by Mr. Eldridge. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion pass seven oh. Thanks, appreciate you. Thanks, Charles. Moving on to the next item. Item number eleven, I'm sorry, twelve. That's the present, an update and street maintenance, the Mayak Plan, can invite Mr. Creed, good evening, sir.
Just right before Brian starts, I just wanted to do a little introduction. So for those people in the public, I've had several ask me, what's the Mayak? So I thought maybe it would bear an introduction of that. So the Mayak is a basically a methodology to look into a project. It's normally used. It's normally used in Six Sigma, but for our purposes, we're just using it as kind of a methodology to work through an analysis of an issue. And so we had applied that methodology to our street maintenance program. And you all know, we went through several months of work to do that. And now we adopted that project and Brian, um, is going to give you a little update. The mayor had asked for a periodic update of the implementation of this project. So we asked Brian, since he's leading this effort to, to present that this, this evening. So thank you.
Two more seconds. I asked what a periodic update because the last big, we, we, we take on many, many projects, big projects, but the big project we took was the police department. I thought chief coming in and giving a periodic update sort of kind of kept us moving and we knew the progress made. And this is a big one. We talked, there's a lot of money we spent. It's a big infrastructure improvement, I thought. And again, staff takes, takes a lot of pride in doing it. We want to kind of get to know that thing. And the Damaic, I think, stands for what? Define measure.
Define, measure, analyze, improve and control.
It's a short acronym. Mr. Creed?
This word? All right. Hello, Mayor and Council. As y'all know, we had a, uh, work session back in February to determine how to, how to approach our street maintenance program. Part of that is the Damaic process that's soon brought to us. On March eighth, y'all approved a resolution twenty one dash oh nine to, to, uh, go with this maintenance plan. This was the spreadsheet that public works started with, uh, with the, I don't know what you call it, you know, we, the pavement condition index is what we call it. Y'all call it them. Just what the roads look like through the robotics or whatever. And we did the, we did the robotics one and we did a public works one. And then Charles put all this together with the, with the, um, recommendations of, of staff. And you guys come up with, with what y'all wanted to do in the next slide. Now identified the funding following, uh, a three point nine million dollars, which we appreciate. That's the most I've ever seen. I never had that much money, uh, ever given to me by any council. So that, that's awesome. It's really proactive and, you know, y'all should be congratulated for that for sure. That includes trip road grant fund matching, local, local street, uh, money we have from the twenty twenty rollover. The PSA for this year and portions of the fiscal twenty one, twenty one road maintenance and a reduction in the, uh, reserve fund balance to a hundred and twenty days. Twenty twenty certificates of obligation for road construction and a portion remaining from Fund Twelve. They put together those funds and then an adaptive minute of four phases. And, uh, we've started on the first one. So next slide. So phase one was Planters Road, US, uh, USAID to the service road. This was going to be done, uh, in a partnership with the development at, on Planters Road. That's a company of Bob Moore Construction is doing that. We have identified all the panels on Planters Road to do with, with the ones they were already going to do and submitted them to them, but we're waiting on process to come back and we haven't heard back yet. But I think they're a ways out from doing that. There's, there's some issues with getting concrete these days. So it, I think it's pushed us back. Additionally, was Town East Boulevard, East Fort DePolly. That's a complete rebuild on that road. Uh, we did do the geotech on that and, uh, it came back just like all the others. I know Councilman Negan likes to call us, you know, just, uh, talks about them just being old county roads and he, he's not wrong. There's not a lot of road base there, but we're gonna, it's good to know that and, uh, be able to move forward in the future of what we got. The next one was, uh, on that one, we're going to look for an RFP. We're going to put together. That one's a little more complex. We're going to put it together with multiple other projects and do one large RFP. So that one hasn't went out yet, uh, but we're working on it. We're putting together that. Riverstone was assisted living to planters was an, was an overlay only. That's where they slayed asphalt over the existing concrete. Staff went out and did a bunch of small level ups. That way there wouldn't be big portions of, of asphalt had to be laid in certain spots. It was pretty uniform and flat. So you could have a decent drivability. And then we crack sealed it as well. And, uh, that project was, uh, was completed earlier this, this, this week, the two weeks, three weeks ago. And there'll be some pictures we'll show you guys. Clay Road, South Collins, Long Creek, uh, we did the geotech on it. That, that road has got some drainage issues. There's very little sub, there was some subgrade dump work done, but only concrete stabilization of existing soils. And, uh, I don't know, I wasn't here a long time ago. So I, I can figure is that place was been built on a swamp or a pond? Or, or something like that. It is, we've got a lot of water problems on there. So, uh, Lyle has come up with, uh, with a, with a plan to, to put a little bit of underdrain under that road and try to help us out when we do the repair panels. And we're not completely redoing this road. But, uh, we did submit an RFP and put it out on the web, uh, last Friday, I believe. So, uh, hopefully we get some good prices on that. That's, uh, another concern with the concrete shortage. We'll see, we'll see what we get back.
So, so Brian, let me ask you, so.
Yes, sir.
One of the ideas that you and maybe Charles and Jenkins brought is to have some sort of contract with construction company. Maybe I'm saying this loosely, to bid this out, have a long term. Is that still the plan for all these roads or, or we are doing on our own?
That, that would be the plan for the next coming fiscal year. Right. Out, out of the next existing budget, we would put together, you know, figure out an amount, you know, we're going to dedicate to concrete. We're going to dedicate to asphalt roads and then have a contract with, that we put out, you know, an RFP or an RFQ for, an RP for, for companies to come in and get that work and it'd be for per unit. So if I called them and, and whatever the unit is, if it's yards of concrete or square yards of asphalt, they would agree to apply that much for whatever the contract amount is. So if I only needed a portion of it, they would just come do it. But when the contract ran out, that would be it.
But the goal is to give them some number of.
It would, right. They would bid on, we would guarantee them this much work. And, and, uh, I could just call them. We wouldn't have to bid the process every time.
That's our thought with the ongoing maintenance, like for each fiscal year. On these projects, we are going to group for economies of scale. But when we looked forward into the phases that we have the green light to move forward on, this was the only one that used concrete panels. So that's why, other than the one that we're doing on Planters Road, and that one's kind of a different deal because we're working with the developers. So we, on the, that's why Brian's comment about on the, um, asphalt roads, that we're going to group several of them together and do a big bid so that we could get better pricing. But on, so we are doing what you're explaining, but this is kind of a different animal. But what you're talking about is what we'll do for ongoing maintenance.
So this is concrete. We will continue.
Clay Road is concrete.
Clay Road is concrete.
Yes, ma'am. So Town East also, right? Town East is not.
Town East will be asphalt. That will be the new RFP. We issued an RFP for clay Friday.
Okay.
And we're gonna, we're putting together an RFP that includes portions of Town East.
Town East will be part of the next, but we just doing the base, the groundwork or, or the, the.
Correct.
The background walk, I should, that's what geotech is.
Yeah, well, on clay, it is concrete and it's the only concrete project. So that's why we went ahead and issued the RFP on that one, because it's the only one that we have right now in this phase. So the other ones, we have several asphalt ones. So we'll, um, lump all those together and do an RFP.
Thanks. Yep. Just like Susan said, we're lumping the asphalt ones together and those are, uh, a complete rebuild of Town East from East Fort DePolly. Some repairs on Town East between Collins and Jobson, on, between Jobson and New Hope and from New Hope to Tower Place. We're putting those together now. Those are not, those, those, those repairs are cutouts where they're going to cut out the old asphalt and you'll see those square patches where they do. Mo- most of this is shoulder work, uh, along, I say shoulder work, it's next to what would be a shoulder on Town East. Where they're going to cut, cut portions of lanes out and redo the subbase and repair where it sank down from the shoving. You tell where our water line is, exactly where that's drooped everywhere.
So Brian, uh, when we bid out the buckets of, uh, bunches of, of groups, I should say.
Correct.
Will there be provisions? Because depends on the geotech, there'll be different conditions, right? So that, that'll be baked into that bid that where they know they are going to get different.
Right. So the underdrain under clay was due to the geotech. You know, when we see the, we see the amount of water that was going on underneath that road. We, I was surprised to see that some, some subgrade work had been done to that road before it was put down. But, but the indications are, but for the geotech, for the, we're only going to be able to do a certain amount for the money. But we are going to do the line and concrete stabilization. But I don't think we're going to be able to do select fill. Me and Lyle will talk about that if he wants to and, and we can try it. But, uh, I, I'm trying to keep in mind, you know, what we can do for the money too.
But let's do right though, right?
I, I do want to do as, as good as we can do. Some of these are only overlays only. If the repairs are overlays, there was, there's no subgrade work. And then next slide, please. This is Riverstone. What, all you see there is we, we applied type D. It's what you call a level up. In other words, some areas it might be an inch and a half, some in areas it may be an inch. The road was, uh, was not leveled before. And, and portions of Riverstone had already been overlaid. The portion you see that is light colored in front of those white, in front of those yellow trucks is actually asphalt. It's just a few years older and we've cracked sealed, um, the, the cracks in the asphalt. One thing about overlaying, uh, concrete like that is, is it mirrors the cracks of the, of the, uh, concrete underneath. So you're going to see every panel eventually, you're going to see us having to crack seal and it'll look like panels on that asphalt. But it, but it's held up very well on TC Lefton for the last few years. And, uh, it, you can tell wherever panel is because we've had to crack seal where it mirrored those cracks underneath. But it's done a good job for us. If we can keep those trucks off of it, we'll.
So again, we are putting asphalt on top of the.
It is asphalt on top of concrete. You can see in the first picture over there, we see that paver sitting there. You see that's, that, they sprayed tack on the road already, which is that oily looking substance. It's just a binder for the asphalt to stick to the, to the concrete. But that's actually the old concrete. And you see the asphalt patches we put down to try to bring it to some kind of level where it's not super thick because there's a giant missing portion of, of concrete or something like that. But it, it looks really good. It matches the rest of the road now and, um, and the drivability is much better. Phase two of the project, um, was, is Long Creek and Play to Larkin, uh, which is a complete rebuild. They're, we're going to tear that whole road out. I don't know if y'all been down there. That road is, is a, is a small portion of road, but it's, it's not one of our greatest. It's one of our, one of our poorer roads. Uh, it gets a lot of truck traffic and it's right down, down there in front of the, uh, the water plant. So it gets a lot of abuse of those trucks, make that corn right there. That is a complete tear out and rebuild on that one. And then Glory to East Fork is a repair only. That'd be an overlay over the top of that road. So it'd be essentially what you saw on Riverstone, except for they're going to just overlay over the top of the existing concrete. I mean, it's off, yeah, existing asphalt. North Collins Trip to Redstone, which is right here in front of the school. This one is the same thing. We're just going to overlay it and try to level up, call it a level up. Where they, they put asphalt over the top of it and, uh, and, and try to make it level again. That, that one's a, I was going to be a fun one. There's going to be some thicker asphalt there. There's some pretty good dips in that one. But that is only a level up on. We're not tearing it out. And that road is hopefully going to be rebuilt soon-ish. To match the rest of the home. Then you got East Fork, Glory to Town East. That is complete rebuild. Uh, that's one of our bigger projects. Uh, we did do geotech on all, on that road and on Clay Road and, and, uh, Long Creek. And, uh, both of them mirror every, everything else we have here. It's, it's old dirt and a little bit of lime stabilized, concrete stabilized, not both. Dirt underneath and, and, uh, very thin subbase. We're going to, we're going to have to certainly look at Long Creek and Clay because of the truck traffic. All right, next slide. I'm sorry, let me go back right here. On the, on these, we're including these in the next RFP. So really you're getting some of phase one and some of phase two, if I'm understanding what, correct? Yes. Okay. So we're kind of, we're bleeding the two together and making one big RFP. So, so the next update, if, if we get that far before we have the next update and this RFP is already issued, it's going to include all of it. We'll be facing phase three. And, and not finish the stage. Phase three is Polly, the Barnes Bridge to East Fork and that is a complete rebuild as well. Uh, we did do the geotech and yes, and it's identical to all the rest of them. Milled up eight, ten inches deep dirt. They did some concrete stabilization and threw some type D on top. And it, it has failures. This will, I guess this is coming after the funding from text. So I guess we don't know when this is going to happen until maybe next summer, in the next month.
Actually, this one is, um, we're just waiting for the signed contract on the bridge. And I actually got it last week, but there was an error on the contract. So I had to send it back. So that's the only thing we're holding up. I just want to know 100% that we have that locked in. So I was very excited last week and then it was a huge letdown when I read the contract.
So basically, it's just a matter of getting the, the details.
Yeah, just, I sent it back and said, hey, you have an error in this contract. Can you please correct it so I can sign it? Um, but we're, this was a preventative thing. We just didn't want to release this money for, um, street maintenance until we knew 100% that that bridge was locked in. And so as soon as I get that revised contract, we can release this phase as well.
That would be a separate RFP, the third RFP. And then phase four is, is, is the old PSA we wrote a couple of years ago to redo trip, uh, from the Falls to Beltline. Yeah, that's the cog money. This project been sitting in, in the wings for, for a good minute. So, um, I think y'all are all familiar with it, but it's, it's just a rebuild the entire road. It's complete rebuild. It's not a level up. It's a tear out and rebuild it. Originally it was just to the, to the standards we always built it at, but I think we've included now, uh, lime stabilization, refracture. Concrete stabilization, which should, should help us firm up some, a little bit better.
And as a reminder, on this one, we held back the money that, so in the event for some reason the grant falls through, we held back the money to go ahead and be able to do it regardless. So if the grant comes in and everything is smooth, it actually frees up more money to go deeper into your yellow streets.
So that's a trip coming east is also in that shape.
Going, yes, that's correct. And that did not make the, the cut on, on existing plan.
Brian, I appreciate this is a lot of, oh, keep going.
Yes, sir. And, uh, the next slide just showed you the expenditures. This is what y'all approved, three point nine million. We spent thirty five thousand, one hundred on the riverstone overlay, less than what we anticipated. So that's good news, especially considering what I'm worried about the concrete price coming in. Uh, we did spend nineteen thousand on geotechnical, uh, but we don't have to spend that money anymore. Uh, we know what's there. We have that data and, um, you know, we can use that moving forward. That leaves the fund balance remaining of three point eight, seven three million.
So once the bid comes and then we can estimate how much more we need to commit out of a three point eight, then we can start properly planning for the rest. So I appreciate, there's a lot of details. Thank you. Come back and, uh, brief us at some frequency. Let's do this as a frequency.
Yeah, definitely. And just, you know, so that you know, we do have, um, a weekly to bi-weekly, depending on what's going on with, um, Lyle's done a ton of work with geotechnical on this and helping to come up with what the prescription for each road is going to be. Obviously Brian's leading the effort on implementation and, and Charles has been really instrumental in helping moving this project forward. So, um, we're just really keeping the pressure on, make sure we're all on point to getting these things implemented.
Thank you so much. Counsel, I hope this was beneficial for everybody. Okay, moving on to item number thirteen. Discuss, consider and act upon selecting a council member to participate in the interview process for the new financial. Let me, let me say that Susan called me on this one and that I said, let's put in the agenda for council to decide, you know, if anyone wants to be part of this interview process. Be that, Susan.
Yes, sir. Um, we've been working really hard to get some quality applicants for this position. It's just, I can't even say how important this position is. We have a great team in place, um, but there's nobody that at this moment wants to step up and apply internally. So, um, they're obviously keeping everything going. They're doing a wonderful job, but we are recruiting externally for this. We have a slate of candidates. We're going to start interviewing, um, on Wednesday afternoon and then all day Thursday. So I know that's a big commitment, but I wanted to give you all an opportunity to have a representative on the interview panel, but we would need. But we would need somebody that could do the Wednesday afternoon and all day Thursday. So if there's any of you who are willing to participate, you all work with this position a lot. So I wanted to give you an opportunity for input.
Okay, council, anyone interested in participating in to kind of come into the time. I would at the same time.
I'd say I I would absolutely love to be involved in these, but that timeframe just, uh it just doesn't work for me this time here.
Anyone else interested? Great, the brave soldier. I second that. Mr. Eldridge, anyone else wants to stand? Okay, you don't need to, we don't need to vote, right? We just, that's it, right?
Yes, so that's fine. I just needed a name and we'll get you the um schedule on your calendar and get you a copy of the packet. It isn't, as all of our interviews are, a panel interview, I think there are six people on this panel, so you'll be in good company.
Thank you, Mr. Eldridge. Okay, we are going to be 14, item number 14, mayor and council request for future staff updates in the agenda items. And then council. Okay, moving on to item number 15, that's executive session. Council can have a motion recess in the executive session pursuant to chapter 551, subchapter D. Are the Texas government code section 551 dot or 87 economic development? To deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive for business prospect project.
I make a motion to recess in the executive session pursuant to chapter 551, subject, chapter D, section 551 dot zero eight seven.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to recess in the executive session for second. Second by Mr. Eldridge. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed seven hundred, time is eight twenty-three. And we are in executive session. Members, the audience, I had no idea there's going to be action out of this or not. You're welcome to stay back and join us once we get back. Thanks.
Council, can I have a motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Eldridge, second by Mr. Freeman to adjourn. All in favor, signify. All opposed. Motion passed seven. Our time is nine o'clock. We are adjourned. Thanks, Rachel. Thanks, Charles, Susan.